Good evening and welcome to this special town council meeting. Thank you so much for for being here tonight. We have in person four of our council members, one of them, one council member is on is on Zoom, so she'll be participating with us remotely. I want to point out that the folks from Montgomery Municipal Cable are here. They've helped us with the audio and video setup. They'll be recording this for us and making it available online. And we will be using them down the road for our video production needs with our council meetings. Let's see, any adjustments, any changes to the agenda tonight? Are we good?
No changes.
No changes? We're good with the agenda?
Yep.
All right, okay. Then let's, let's start. Just want to point out, we have two items on our agenda tonight, two things that we're going to be discussing as a council. One is renovation of this building, Town Hall. We're not deciding tonight what we're going to do in terms of what the final outcome is going to be, or what we want this building to be. We're discussing what we want the range of options to be, what we want an architectural restoration firm to consider and to present to us. What are the sort of the parameters of that? So again, this is not a decision, there's no deciding tonight about, you know, are we going to paint the outside in hot pink? We're not doing anything like that, it's just, it's several steps prior to that. The other thing we're going to be discussing is the town office renovation and what space we're going to use or not use for expanding and giving our staff space for doing their work. So let's start with a presentation by residents. I'd be, I'd like to start with the folks who were able to come in person. So Marion, would you like to kick us off? Could you please come to our microphone and tell us your name and address? And
and Marion Green, 11010 Montrose Avenue. I'll read, that'll move us along. I favor a model, a modest renovation. Fix what's broken, add technology, be green, address acoustics and a caterer's kitchen. In the previous real estate ventures, starting that the town is engaged in, starting in the 50s, with the recreation center that had a massive amount of volunteer support that went on for a very long time. It turned, the building became a nursery school as well as the library, which they, when they put park in the Kensington Park, that's what was happening in the 50s here. The swimming pool, which was a one of a kind venture, real estate for sure, and a lot of volunteerism. St. James Chapel, this building, which needed to be purchased before some other agency or neighbor purchased it. There were strong advocacy, a lot of problems came up in discussion. What has become Penn Place, Plant Penn Place was another example of strongly held views that came into play. Porcupine Woods, another real estate venture. All of these undertakings were marked by strong advocacy from volunteers who saw unmet needs, developed ideas, committees provided continuity and change where change was needed. Volunteerism is essential. Perhaps our recent town election was a fluke. And the spirit of volunteerism exists and will grow in the town. And certainly the use, the success of anything that happens here in Town Hall is going to depend on how much and who and how long. There's been a trend toward people working very, very hard and then disappearing. And I can believe in Brownout. And I think that's one of the issues. When people have an opportunity to discuss what their experiences have been, and I think we have people who will do that in terms of the use of the space. That again shows respect for the volunteers that make programming happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken? Is it Raven? Raven?
You did a good job.
But is that right, Raven?
That's right, Ken Raven, 4802 Strathmore Avenue. So I'm a neighbor of the Town Hall, our property is just on the other side of that window. And because I'm not as good a public servant as you folks, you can watch me eating dinner later. We love having this Town Hall facility next to us. It has been a fabulous part of being a residence in the town with the events that are held here, you know, the Film Society elections, having the bell rung after elections, which I kind of hope we could go back to. But we love having the facility, the Town Hall, the town staff has been outstanding in responding to any issues we've had, which have been few and far between. And we get a lot of joy from the activities that are taking place here when it's rented out. So the rear of this property has a beautiful garden and a patio. And it's just such a pleasure to have weddings, birthday celebrations where people are coming in from in town, from outside. It's just, it adds to our life having this structure here. We've been discouraged over the years with the decay of the property. It's just evident on the outside has caused the council to take action. And we applaud that effort. We're very supportive of the hard work that has gone into this so far. We would ask that the council as it evaluates the options, respects the historical architectural tradition of the building. We think it's very, it's very appealing. It just, it speaks to us, we would like to see that sustained over time. With my background in the fire service, I'm eager to see a little bit more in the way of fire protection systems in this facility. I just dread the possibility that this beloved structure would go away. And I fear that, you know, the probability is higher than than we would like. I'd like to sum up by saying we really appreciate the hard work that's gone into this, what Stephen's done over the last months. We've, you know, we've not contributed frankly to this effort. But we've watched carefully and I'm so impressed with the diligence, the thoughtful effort that's moved forward. Reading the packet today, 90 bloody pages, oh my Lord, glad you didn't print it. I was also impressed with so much for Green. I was so impressed with the thoughtful comments from the citizens of the town. There were not very many statements that I came across that rubbed me the wrong way. I'm just grateful to have neighbors that are thinking carefully about the future of the town. So to show how bad a citizen I am, I'm going to be leaving because we're going to be going to party on a trip. And I have things I need to do, but I wanted to come and just tell you as a neighbor, we are supportive of this effort and we appreciate the hard work that the elected officials of the town and the town staff are providing for this. So thank you, good night.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Is there
Can we sign you up to help review for the fire services, a fire protective design?
I'm not, I'm not a fire protection engineer, there's somebody else in town who is.
We know where you live.
I'm not an engineer, I only play one on TV. But I just think it's, I think it's something, a project. The fire protection elements of this structure are important.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Enjoy your trip.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the group? Apparently Jack Mandell would like to do so.
I'm Jack Mandell from Rockabye Avenue. So I'll address having 20 years experience of putting on a lot of different mainly films here. But I just want to encourage the design to to be very modular in the sense of when we looked here at using the speakers, for example, that are built in, they're, they were broken, they're lousy speakers, they, it didn't work. So we end up having to, for the films, we end up having to bring our own speakers, we actually have been, the town's been very generous in allowing us to store the equipment, which is now in my house, but is usually stored right over there. But we still, you know, all of us are probably in their 60s, 70s and 80s who are the kind of the leads of the Film Society. And what, what we notice is, well, we don't like to pick up the speakers like we used to. And so we're looking for, again, modularity, we're looking for, because things are going to change. We've gone from 16 millimeter films with a single speaker to DVDs and now to computer-based films. And over the next 20 years, it's going to change again. And so the town needs to be in a position to change things out. And I would just encourage that to do something like that, you know, don't build a speaker into the wall, it's not going to be there. Or that, that's going to outlive its usefulness in 10 years. As for the kitchen, we, we put on a lot of food events. The Film Society always, food is normally prepared offsite and brought in here. So the idea of having a warming kitchen, if that's what it's called, versus a full kitchen is absolutely first rate for us. We also think that the idea of if you could modularize, but also as a way to capture, recapture some of that to, to kind of like have lock capabilities on screens, on projectors, on speakers, and only with the town's permission and separate PIN numbers or whatever, will they be able to get to those as a mechanism to ensure you know who's using it, that they're paying for the services and that it will be for the benefit of the town. That's about all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Jack. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to participate? Just sexy. Anybody, anybody online? Doesn't look like it. Okay, all right, Sue.
First time, Sue Petito, I live at 11409 Rockabye Avenue. I too have been here as first a mom with kids, but also a host of many, many events. Most of them musical, most of them open to the public, some of them private. The use of the piano has been invaluable, I think, large for the whole community. And I want to applaud whomever, maybe Elizabeth.
Sue, I've got a request, if you could get a little closer to the mic from somebody on Zoom. They want to, they're having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, is that better? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, do I have to start over? Um, I wanted to applaud all the efforts to cleaning up the exterior of the piano. You know, if one were to sell this instrument, it would be not a huge sum, but if you were to buy it new today, this instrument would cost over $90,000. So like the town owns trucks and maintains them. Maintaining the piano is important as an ongoing general matter. And the new cover is spectacular and it fits. So to have a space where music can still happen is of course important to me. And along with music events, also comes food and celebrations. And a warming kitchen is what we have been using, but if if something more sophisticated can be incorporated, if we call it a catering kitchen, that would be even more useful, I think. The upgrade of all of the electronic possibilities, of course. And I, I would like to see an expansion of rooms out the back if the building stays here. And I would like to see a kitchen area with a door to close. Because among other things, some of my dearest friends in town were made in the kitchen here, participating in group events that were open to the whole town. And they're, they're valuable, you know, but that's all I really have to say. Thank you for taking such good care of the piano.
Thank you.
Barb, should I read the emails that Caleb brought or?
Yeah, there should be four at your places. I think those who submitted the comments would likely appreciate that. I know at least one person couldn't attend tonight.
Four. Okay. Chris Keller's is really long, so I'm going to save that. This is from Joanne Schmader, says, hi Barb, I know there are many considerations already. Okay, on the table for tonight's meeting, but another one should be resiliency planning, like having backup power in times of electrical outage, the use of Town Hall as an emergency shelter, as a cooling, charging, free wifi center, et cetera. Obviously those services and equipment can come from the ARPA funding. So that's Joanne Schmader. Sid Rosenzweig. Having looked over Steve's synopses, the thing that most jumps out to me is that we should not move Town Hall. There's no particular synergy that I can ascertain to having the Town Hall with the restaurant, post office and town offices. The original idea of having a communal space with stuff together, like a park place, I think that's Penn Place, is all well and good, but that effort failed a century ago. At best, the benefit to a move would appear to be more parking, but there's always parking within a block, on Oxford, on my block of Montrose and on Kennelworth on the north side of Strathmore. I think that the lighting, acoustics and technology in the main room need to be made current for films, presentations, small concerts and the like. In addition, the warrant of small spaces in the back ought to be opened up, if possible, to make more of the footprint functional in some way. From Jeannie Mandelblatt. I can't attend the meeting, so I'm writing to express my view. I'm strongly opposed to spending any money on Town Hall except minor repairs needed. I cannot see how the expense provides any benefits to town residents. And I see many more pressing needs in terms of aging infrastructure and climate change threats. In the same vein, I think minor renovations to the town office might be needed, but costs should be very minimal. In my view, any expenditures here have the appearance of waste. Chris Keller, I see you on Zoom. Do you want to summarize what you emailed?
No, that's all right, so long as the council members received that email, it was sent, I'm sorry, and I apologize for the tardiness, but so long as it was received, I don't think it's necessary to be redundant by reading it into the record. Thank you though.
Thank you. So any last minute? George Miller or Martin? No, okay, all right, then it's now up to council to discuss. So we are we are looking at what are the parameters for this RFP, this request? What are we going to put in the sort of the guidelines of what we're asking an architectural firm to look at or to present to us? Am I, Steve, can you clarify, like, I'm not saying this correctly?
That's correct, but putting together the scope that we'd ask them to put in a report and usually a report like this becomes a concept report, a concept report or a schematic report. And then that would guide a full design. So it's usually a good resource to go back to kind of what's your, what's your historic preservation approach, what's your, you know, on all the exterior of this building, what's your interiors approach? What's your program? What are your acoustic approaches, what are your equipment approaches? Things have changed a lot in recent years, so be good to update a lot of those. Just facility things about the building and then about a historic building and then about what the building could do for the town, roll that together and use that for a design.
So what we're doing is we're asking architectural preservation firms to bid on the chance to come up with options, concepts for us to then consider. So it's, it's
And I think it's important that the concept RFP include a budget or at least the beginnings of a budget so that we know what approach and what the cost involved would be. Let me show you, my microphone is close to you.
But yes, yes, I think that we need, that needs to be part of what we're requesting is, is a budget, what's?
Correct, that's almost always in the appendix and then you would have, whoever that architect is, as a prime contractor, they would hire engineers that are really specialized and or at least have abilities to deal with a building like this, a lot of different consultants that might deal with office buildings or hospitals, they don't really, they're not used to working behind a plaster ceiling, for example, like that. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so that, that architect as a prime with preservation experience would hire the right consultants to be able to kind of lead the guy to leave that report and figure out what should be on the table for a building like this.
And also it would be important that it includes the zoning and permitting requirements to make sure that we've got all that covered.
Right, we don't want have extra expenses, we want to know soup to nuts.
Right.
What are we going to, what's this going to cost? What are the various proposals? So I'd envisioned that, that we talk about this in presenting what the problems are, what the main issues are, that we want all the concepts, so I'm envisioning four proposals that we ask for four different concepts. And each of them should address certain issues. We know the sound here, we know the audio visual is something that needs to be fixed 100%. We know there are certain things that we know, that we know need to be included in every design. So what are those things? Is that, I mean, this is sort of common knowledge, I guess, because we've had, we've had several reports done on this, the Balladina's report from 2015 lays that, lays that out. But the priorities, things that Jack mentioned, the audio, the, as Sue mentioned, the preservation of the piano and, and, and having a safe space for that kitchen being updated, is that, are we, is, is part of the requirement that we update the kitchen, well, update the kitchen? Is a caterer's kitchen a thing that we want or do we want to continue it to be a warming kitchen? Are we satisfied with, with the level of what's there?
One of the issues we have to consider with a kitchen is that once you go to much more than what we have, we now have to certify it, we're going to have to have fire protection, we're going to have to have somebody who is capable of operating it in a sanitary manner, so it's it's not as simple as saying get, upgrade the kitchen. It's going to require a bit more, I'm sure Lisa's probably dealt with that in many ways.
Inspections, permitting, I mean, it's, it's it's, it's a much more complicated and expensive process to build it and maintain it. I know that Bannockburn just did a nice warming kitchen, I saw it, I've talked to the architect who designed it. You know, I think it's going to come down to, you know, costs and, and benefit, but it seems to me a warming kitchen would suffice most of what we've been doing here in the past.
Benefit's a key word though, because it's, that's the thing that could be considered is, is there a benefit to having something that is a real food service kitchen? Like I did another historic building like this in DC where we made a demonstration kitchen, that's what they reasoned for cooking classes and cooking clothing, they did need some of those permits. It's a little bit different than a regular commercial kitchen, but sort of in between, so that's the sort of thing, is there enough of a wish for people to do that sort of thing that we haven't done in the past and the future to make it worthwhile to take an extra step to make that kitchen? But if it's always going to be used the same way it has been for like town dinners where it's rare food just brought in and laid out in trays, then it's really a warming kitchen, yeah.
Jerry Lee? I would think that we'd want in your four, in your four options, you'd want the most basic level of upgrading the current kitchen still to a warming kitchen, but with modern, the best that we can get appliances and maybe more space, more oven space, you know, et cetera. And some additional space in the room for maneuverability. And then we could maybe explore in higher level options some of the, something above that and what that would cost, not just in operations, but also maintenance.
For an example, we just built a kitchen over on Seven Lux and Bradley that was on a commercial code and we had to put in an anseled hood with a sprinkler in case there was a fire in the stove and it's, it's just a huge amount of expense and complication. So let me just leave it at that.
Do we also, would that mean that only certain people could operate the kitchen or?
No.
Okay.
No.
So the permit would belong to the town?
Correct.
And it would be the town's responsibility to ensure that it was being used appropriately and safely? Barb, did you want to?
No, I just wanted to say a council member DeBose has her hand up.
Okay, sorry.
Need to remember she's out there.
Sure. Donna, go ahead please, councilman or member Donna DeBosch is?
Thank thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Um, just as a quick clarification, when discussing kitchens specifically, what, what is the definition of a just a regular warming kitchen versus a commercial kitchen? And are we all understanding the same definition of such? And having said that, if commercial kitchen means commercial in the sense of the kind of kitchen you see in a restaurant, I don't think we need necessarily that, but upgraded, improved appliances and you know, space is, I think, needed and recommended. But anything beyond that, I don't think that would be a complete requirement and probably would be could be otherwise outsourced to either restaurants in the area or what have you. Thank you.
So one idea I had, which just want to throw that out there is several years ago, when I was thinking about starting an ice cream business, I was looking for a commercial kitchen to rent. And, and it was kind of hard to come by. And the idea of, maybe this is an option, maybe this is a revenue source, just throwing it out there, that if we had an upgraded kitchen, if we had a commercial kitchen, that a chef, a budding chef, I think there are several in town that rent commercial kitchens, or at least there are one or two. This is a, this could be a way that we could help pay for things. This is a use of the building that wouldn't disrupt any other, it would, you know, there could be an exercise class going on in here and someone cooking once or twice a week in a kitchen. I mean, that's, that's something to have in mind is maybe there are some unconventional or, or previously unconsidered things, benefits. You know, that, that, that could come about. That being said, I know that I would not be eligible for such a thing, but but generally I like the idea of, of having, at least having the option, what would an upgraded warming kitchen, warming kitchen meaning that nothing is, no food is actually prepared there, but it's only, there, there's oven space just for heating food that's already cooked and just bringing it to, to safe temperature.
Really could be looked at as that's the base, as a warming kitchen and you just look at that, and I think that's what you're saying, like Jerry Lee, right? You, you could take the same thing and add in that extra step for X amount of dollars. The space really wouldn't be that much different, it doesn't, and it doesn't necessarily have to look like a restaurant kitchen. It could be something that really looks like a residential kitchen, but it just has a lot of the health and safety requirements with the sprinklers and three compartment sink and hand wash sink, all those kind of things. Yeah, so there's Yeah, so there's a lot of extra equipment. There's skillful ways it can be designed, so it doesn't look so institutional. So it doesn't doesn't, doesn't have to be extreme one way or the other. Could be kind of a hybrid to have capability.
To be ADA accessible, the counter spaces.
So.
To jump through.
Are we, are is there consensus to include a request to look at both warming kitchen and upgraded commercial kitchen? Is that, is that something that we want to look at?
I would agree.
Okay.
Premium option.
Yes, I found one, one.
So I, I Yeah. So I think that beyond the kitchen, I think some of the issues that I think should be included in this RFP at one point is to put a lower level in this building and put all the HVAC systems, all the equipment down there and some storage space and then open up the back so we don't have so many little spaces. And then add, and maybe move to a better place, the bathrooms and make them accessible.
So let's, let's tackle that a little bit at a time.
Okay.
So one issue being storage, the need for more storage space. Does it have to be in the basement? Could it be moving up, you know, putting
Another level.
And making another level. I mean, I'm, I'm, this isn't for us to decide right now. That's not what we're doing. But what we're doing is we're asking we're, we're, we want to tell these firms we have a need for more space. Is that accurate? And it's not just for storage of things like speakers or, or music stands or things like that. It's also for things like our, you, the
Equipment.
And other equipment like that.
Which, right, I'm right. Sorry, Lisa. I just wanted to say I like that idea of giving them the functional requirement as opposed to telling them how to need it, but would you have to be specific about what kind of storage we need?
Right. That it's not, that it does need to be.
Right. How frequently accessed and what it is to store.
And will it need an elevator to get it up and down, locking?
Well, maybe not. It depends, because I've thought about this and Stephen and I have talked a little bit about this too, about the fact that you know, it would help a lot for the mechanicals to be able to have a full basement underneath this building, and it would be great for storage. But the one thing we'd have to do is consider a non-public space, because as soon as we consider a public space, it has to be ADA capable. If it's only accessed by a handful of people, then we don't have to meet that requirement. So it would be great for storage or particular you, things like maybe archives might eventually end up putting things down there that are rarely accessed, but would still be accessible for an archivist. We'd probably have to build a special room for that, maybe, or we'd have to do some special requirements to ensure that the stuff is kept at proper temperatures and humidity levels and so on and so forth. Consideration should be made for the town staff if they wanted to have some type of break room, bunk room, overnight room if for when they plow snow. Definitely I would put all the mechanicals downstairs. It would make it a lot easier for everyone. And the other thing is, we could, we can consider something such as either putting a backup generator down there or they make ones that go outside, but.
Is the, when, if a space is not considered a public space, could someone like the Film Society, would, would the Film Society are going down there to retrieve equipment? Would that be considered a public use?
I would think not. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't say for sure, but I would think not, because it's to me, the public space would mean that people go down there for meetings, they go down there for events, they go down there for some type of regular activity where everybody's going down there versus a very limited number of people going for definite purpose, I'll say.
Anybody have any insight as to the, the answer to that question?
I see we've put it on the list for the attorney and there will be more, I'm sure.
Regarding the architect, because it's always hazy with that sort of thing. It's a lot of times that if somebody would make the argument that they really need to get there, then typically you need to provide accessibility, but if it's really just town staff doing things and it's not, say, an instructor that's going to get to a place that it might be might be one thing versus the other. So it's, it'll be important for that to be studied. It could be the kind of thing where it's an accessible route to get down there, but not necessarily an elevator. It might not need mobility, accessibility for a wheelchair, but, but the stairwell would be accessible dimensions and your, your doors would be and so on and so forth. And then probably be good to just get the, the overall kind of percentage of the space that we would need for it. So like hotels will do ten to fifteen, sometimes twenty percent of the meeting room space as storage, because it holds all your tables, chairs, your AV equipment, everything else. So we may want to look at some of those ratios. But then the other thing is we've had in the past, I think a fair amount of things are stored by different groups that use things here, whether it's exercise equipment or even just things that are specific to like a certain club. You know, maybe there's gonna be a, some sort of a storage area that is programmed in where the those spaces, those groups could rent a locker, say, or rent a small closet or half a closet. That would be a little bit of a revenue source for us, but also be a convenience for them.
You had talked at one point, Steve, about going back to the cutout and the window in the front for the historic. Is that something that you think we should put in the RFP as well?
So that I want to broaden that a little bit. When we talk about making this building historic and respecting the historical nature of this building, what does that mean? Does that mean going back to the footprint of, of the original building? Does that mean making the front more original to the more like the original, but allowing other parts of the building that you don't necessarily see in the back? I guess I'm thinking of the Chevy house. There's a Chevy house on Argyle that recently put an addition on the back and I wouldn't know that it was there, the addition, because it was done so respectfully from the front. So what do we mean by respecting the historical nature of this building? Or, or the historical nature of this town? Is that a fair question? Am I?
Well, one question that I don't know if has been resolved is are we gonna pay an architect to include in the concept, one concept being to move this building? Are we not going down that road anywhere?
Is that? I think that does, I think that does, I think that sort of falls under the question of historical nature, though.
Right.
I, you know, I, I think that that should be something that we consider. I don't think that shutting down an idea, even if it seems outlandish, you guys, I guess there wasn't a lot of support for my idea for a discotheque and Taco Bell. But, you know.
Does disco anymore.
Nobody does disco anymore. But, but I think that it's important to open, to have our minds open to what is possible, even if it's a little bit radical. And that there might be elements of something radical that, that aren't so radical. So I would support and I would like us to consider and have one of the options be what else could we do to have a town hall? What else could a town hall mean to this town? I mean, it's not committing to doing that, but it is having a, you know, thinking outside the box.
There's gonna be a substantial amount of money that you're gonna spend for somebody to do that. You're gonna spend a lot more money to have one of the concepts be to move the building to a different site than to keep it here and then decide what we want to do to make it the way we want it here. I just think it's a fundamental question and do we want to pay for the money to think about moving it? Because I've talked to a lot of people in town recently and asked them about their thoughts about moving it, and I haven't heard a lot of people thinking it's a good idea. And I talked to somebody yesterday who was saying if we're gonna have events and parties and to move it on the other side and then fight the train noise, they thought that was a really bad idea. So I'll just leave it at that. I personally would not support moving the town hall.
Okay, but we're not talking about, or would we support moving it? We're talking about whether we
I wouldn't support paying for a design and a budget and a feasibility to move it.
Okay, all right.
Since it's been here a long time.
Okay. Yeah, so I'd like to hear Steve's opinion on what the additional cost of exploring that option is, because I'm in agreement with Lisa that it's really an unlikely to be approved option. And so I'm interested to hear, how much are we going to pay for something that is really has very little support from the public? And I'm not sure how many town, town council members. Sure. I, I do want to say that I've also talked with people who have said, wow, that's kind of a really interesting idea that you know, what is it? So it's not that there's clearly I'm in favor of, of, of exploring this option or exploring what it could be. But I'm not the only one. So.
I've heard about equal. I think people think it's not a good idea versus people think it's an interesting idea, but I think it's like everything else in public discourse or even especially in this town. It's like, it's, it's, it's a lot easier to it's a lot quicker, like people to be against something versus want to consider something. I think we've seen that a lot on projects around. So I think that could be that was the reason for pitching it as a study, is to kind of see what could happen. And I don't think it would cost a whole lot in the study, because it's not like you would do one whole study and then repeat everything again. So a lot of the, a lot of the items are gonna be shared amongst all of it, your historic analysis, your analysis in the bathrooms, the storage, the kitchen, et cetera, et cetera. So it's really a matter of you probably would do like a pretty heavy detailed look at multiple concepts here. And you would do something really quick to just say, hey, what if you just took some of the basic concepts of there and then look at just the pros and cons over there. And I, I agree, like one of the biggest challenges against over there is the train noise. So but originally that was meant to be like one of the big public spaces in this town. It's unusual to have something like this happen. It just happened because the, the town really started in the eighteen eighties, I think, and it had a, a lull of development after nineteen hundred. And there was only, I think, like thirty or forty houses. So this was just a big half a block that was open. So somebody just bought this lot as a group and put the church here. And then eventually all the houses kind of surrounded it. So it's not like it was planned to be here.
Right.
So it just had me thinking early on that I've always seen it as something where this building, I know everybody will say it gets used a lot, but I, I walk by it most of the time. I think it's empty. It doesn't really get used as much as maybe was thought. And it, it had me thinking, would we get more utility and more bang for the town's buck by considering moving it over there where it might be, you know, in conjunction with the town offices and the post office and the restaurant and tennis courts and everything else, where it would be more of like a town center of sorts. And so just, just to check it out.
So what would, what would the cost be? How much additional, like how much would each of these? Wh- what's the big picture of, of what are these bids gonna cost? What, I mean, the, the bids that we get back?
For four.
For, for four options. Like, how much is that gonna cost? I know you don't know, because you're not gonna bid on this. I don't know if George, if you'd
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't talk too specific costs on, about that on the
But we don't have any, but, but we, we're not talking about any specific bids. This is Barb, is this kosher to ask, like, an estimate? I mean, are we talking, I guess what I'm wondering is, are we talking that this is a fifty thousand dollar thing or this is a three hundred thousand dollar?
Yeah, I think it's, it's fine to talk in sort of very broad based, how many digits? I think to echo Jerry Lee's comment, I wouldn't get too specific, because undoubtedly there are going to be prospective bidders who are gonna be listening to this meeting.
Right. Fair point.
So eight, eight thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. I think I have kind of a picture and a range of what I think it might be. And it's probably not really important to talk about what that number range might be, but I think the key would be that a lot of effort probably should be spent on those things that are shared amongst all the concepts and probably a lot of effort being put into detailing multiple, the very likely concepts. And then a very it could be catered to be a very limited look at probably something that is, you know, perhaps out of the box or something that's very minimal, that would probably be also as much of a long shot. And an example of this is years ago, I did a study for a recreation center in New York City and we, we had three options, but then later, that's what the, the client wanted to do was to come up with something that was really kind of a stretch option. And it worked really well, because we did something that was really outlandish. It was to take a park and build a residential tower on top of it, so that the residential developer would pay for the park and make the park twice as good as what Parks Department ever thought they could do. So they ended up it gave them really good usefulness to kind of really ponder the question. They ended up not doing it, but it really kind of stretched that all the options below it too. And they ended up getting the the funding to do the largest of the, the three options that was below it. And then I think something that was kind of strategic, what we did is I drew the concepts for that Excel concept in an afternoon. And we talked to a real estate developer and he ran up some numbers on what might be involved in that the same way in a couple of hours. So it was much smaller component comparative to the other other plans where I did like painstaking concepts of figuring out how the climbing wall and everything else was gonna work. This was really just a quick and dirty to kind of say, what do we do if we start pulling things out to something that you might not have considered? A lot of times, even if you don't do it, there's a benefit of it.
Phil, we haven't heard from you.
So I guess one of the things would be, can we make it almost a fifth option is to move? Because if we look at it, I'm making some assumption that basically the building is gonna stay pretty much the same as if we had done something here. The only difference would be its location.
Possibly, possibly other facilities brought into it. So maybe in one spot, it could be something where something, it could be a, a scenario where something is built underneath it. Maybe there's town offices below it. Or it could be town offices and a second meeting hall beside it, those kind of things. It's, it's been suggested before to bring town offices over here, but I just don't feel like it makes sense to have it in the back between two houses. So other places that could be possible here. I just don't think it's possible.
No, agreed.
So.
And I think it's important to recognize that if
Hang on, so we do have two town lots that are still over by Penn Place that we could do something with. I mean, we could certainly build another meeting hall or some other facility if we desired over in that area and still have something over there. And then I would have to wonder about the historic side of it, whether or not moving it's becomes a historic problem because of the fact it's been cited here for so many years. But what I'm wondering is, could we make it either a fifth option of just the costs of the moving it and relocating it? And then the rest of it would be covered by some of the other options. We'd roll in the other options. I think it's very similar to what you're talking about.
I think, I think having it be the fourth, I don't know that a fifth is necessary. But, but the idea that, that this fifth, what, you know, big picture, what, what's possible? I think it makes sense if we, if we say we want the bulk of your effort and bulk of your time, the bulk of the cost to be on these other three, and then just let's give it, give us a little hint of, of, of what could be. I mean, go ahead, Jerry Lee?
I, I was waiting my turn.
Lisa.
And I think Lisa had a comment.
Can you speak more to them?
Benefit of moving this is that then you've got a buildable lot here that's probably worth a million dollars or so, you know, eight hundred and fifty, a million dollars. So, you know, it's not like it's the, the land would just sit here and be worth nothing. So I just think that's something to consider if we're talking about pursuing that option.
And I, I'm sorry, I'll quick counter that by saying that we have such a lack of green space in this end of the county that I would suggest it become a park, but
Then it'll be worth.
Jerry? So I would support this fourth option at a lower level of detail that would factor in addressing some of the concerns such as parking and what you would do with this space, which could be both pros and cons, noise, et cetera. So as long as it addresses both the issues and it's very conceptual, so that we don't throw a lot of funding into a design that seems less likely to be the chosen option.
Uh, Donna, would you like to weigh in on this at all?
She's on mute.
I think, I think Uh, yes, I'm right here. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I think in consideration of the, of the four, are we taking into consideration how much funding we in fact have? Or are we doing this more of a pie in the sky kind of approach? I'm more in favor of a more realistic approach to whatever make, you know, changes we need. There's the basics and then there's the extras. Our four perhaps too many extras and if we can't afford them, like, then there's just kind of without too much set of
I'm not. I, I'm afraid I, I didn't, did anybody get a better?
Donna, I think you're gonna have to speak slowly and clearly, because none of us could understand what you were just saying. I'm sorry.
Or if you could, or if you could email Barb real quick.
Yeah.
Okay, then I will, I will email Barb. I know I'm in the best area.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think she was saying something to the effect of, I'm wondering if if it's being planned to a certain amount of budget that's available versus just planned and then figure out a budget. I, I would think it's the other, it's the latter, but then, like she was also asking Um, I I would think it's the other. It's the latter, but then like she was also asking another question about that, like. Should be separated out. So it's the base and the extras. So I might have been wrong, but.
Um.
Maybe send us a smiley face if that sounds right, Donna.
What Stephen just described is what I heard. I'm still waiting for the email from Donna, but I think she was talking about to what extent do you all want to spend time and money exploring things? That we might not be able to afford in any event and to what extent does that factor into it? And I think as Stephen said, she brought up. In her mind that there are very basic things that need to be done and then there might be extras if we if we can afford them.
Another piece is that if we were to move it. To um over by. Uh, the train tracks, um, potential of it being considered a main street. Um, and there is funding for that kind of thing like like uh, what do you call it? Like a. Rejuvenation, like a main street rejuvenation. There is funding for that. So like, I get it that we don't want to. Write more checks than we can cash. But um. But there are lots of other considerations.
Mayor, if I may, Donna did uh just email in the chat. She said um Stephen did understand the point she was trying to make.
Okay, Jerry Lee.
I swear this will be my last point.
This is what we're here on the relocation.
I just wanted to say I really liked what Phil suggested. That if we're going to conceptually consider this, that we also consider. Using the land the town already owns to build something new for the functions that we seem to be concerned about lack being lacking in that town center area. And potentially leaving this historic building in place to be a. Community activity um. Event center.
Okay.
Um, and as part of that, um, one of my reasons for liking that option is I'm a South sider. And I really feel like it would be a very high bar to win me over to move Town Hall, this building away from the South Side. So I just want to make that clear upfront. That's how I feel about it right now. It's a very high bar for me. So you all can vote no for me in two years if you really want Town Hall on the other side of town. Um, there's a platform.
Yeah.
Get it out early, so.
I always knew it was like a long shot, but part of the other thing that originally got me on this. This wavelength, thinking about it years ago was I was thinking. It's going to be a pretty big cost to do this building and we get very little revenue out of it. It could take decades to. Ever pay this off. It's not like Penn Place where we had a pretty. Substantial sum of rent from black market and post office and so on and so forth. So and it's really a big investment. So it had me kind of thinking like it's. Is there something we could do that makes it more usable, more usable by more than one group per day, usable by more than one group at a time? Usable for things that people hadn't really thought about. Maybe there's like smaller meetings. They're like, and they might be like, we had, we had this happen with committees before, like. You don't want the whole rigor morale of opening up the whole town hall to have five people meet. So those sort of things were kind of what spurred it. Um, you know, not really about. Moving it there, but I was thinking about the synergy, kind of, I like said a lot, but I kind of actually thought literally the opposite of what. This comment was that it really is about the synergy. And when gardens suburbs like this were originally built, there there were a lot of common concepts and they usually did have that sort of main area. There was more quiet secluded residential area, which which we kind of have. It just so happened that this chapel ended up over here and we're used to it. So it's not. A problem for us, but you know, there is the potential for a benefit, but. I always thought like and it was pointed out to me a couple of times in past years that. It's going to be hard to for any or a lot of people to really. Think about it until they can kind of see it like what what would it look like there? What would it include to kind of? To really consider it because it might be surprising that you like it that I still think it would be a, you know, pretty. Long shot and pretty high bar to clear for Jerry Lee and others, but that's that was the reason for thinking it. So it's like if we're going to. Spend a lot of time on it and really try to do this right for forty fifty years to really make it last like. Let's not have the regret that, you know, hey, what if we we could have done something else? So and it's a pretty small percentage, I think, of the overall report to kind of like study that and at least have that as a data point.
So one of the things that we're going to have to consider after we get. This. These four concepts. So this is like two or three steps from now. One of the things we have to consider is what do we, how much use do we want for Town Hall? Um, uh, to what extent are we trying to suppress the use of it because we want it? To stay available all the time versus. Uh, what appetite do we have? Maybe we are open to having additional. I know I remember early on my time on the council, Jack was spearheading. Um, when we put together the the rental rates and I know what I don't know if that was a year long discussion. But it was very long and and one of the big questions was how much, how many people do we really want coming in here? How busy do we want it? And um. And so that's definitely something that we'll need to take take into consideration down the road.
And in the charrette and in a lot of the comments I read that people wanted it to be an internal. Amenity for the town as opposed to a money-making venture for the public. Is something that people said a lot. So I think that's important to keep in.
I don't think anybody said, yeah, no, I don't remember anybody making a point that it should be like a big revenue. Gainer from inside, but then that that kind of leads that big gap like we'd have a. Pretty substantial renovation cost and not a lot. Payback on it, so.
So that may be a driver for what we ultimately decide of which kind of concept, which direction to go. So but that's a question for another day.
Right.
Um, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick one is a clarification point. Well, two things. Do we have to get permission from county historic preservation if we make any modifications to this building you're doing with?
As to go under a historic area work permit for anything we do on the front.
So anything we, anything we do to the front of the building.
Yeah, well.
Will need a historic, the whole building.
So go ahead, Barb. Donna is sending comments through the chat. I just want to make sure that I convey them as she requested. Um, Jerry Lee had made some comments a few moments ago, essentially agreeing with Phil's point that. You would both rather. If there's a need, explore it on the Penn Place side and leave this building where it is. And Donna wanted me to share that she concurs with both Phil and Jerry Lee. Um, I think in response to the question about, does it need to make? Yeah, and and Lisa, um, whether the building, she's just questioning whether or not we really should expect to make a lot of money off of Town Hall. And is that really what its purpose is, is to generate revenue or is it more of a community amenity?
Agreed. Um, and and. Uh, uh, are you guys okay with punting that question? I mean, that's not what we're trying to do here tonight is decide. Or to. Uh, make a declaration about. How much we want it to be used. Go ahead.
Very well, okay, I'm so sorry, but I just wanted to quick finish one.
Oh, sorry.
Parts of that question because the second part of the question was an investigation. Um, is it possible to run by? County Historic Pres to see what they would think if we decided to pick up the building and move it like would they? Immediately shoot that down because if they say they were going to, then there's no sense in us spending money to do it. A study on it if we know that it's.
A nonstarter.
Nonstarter.
That's that's a good.
And and Donna, Chris Keller actually posted in the chat as well, just a reminder that historic preservation would need to approve. Any exterior changes or location of the building. Um, I could certainly approach the staff. Um. Obviously, that's just going to be kind of a staff advisory opinion. I don't know to what extent they would weigh in on that, but I can certainly shoot I shoot an email to them tomorrow.
Thanks.
That's that's a that's a great point, Phil. I I'm sad I didn't think of that. Sorry about that. Jerry Lee.
Um, question for Stephen. Are the empty lots within the historic area, the district?
I believe so.
Okay, so any new construction would also be subject, right?
Yeah, but this this building is individually listed and the county master has.
Right, I totally understand that about this building. I was just, I hadn't thought about.
Yeah.
Near Penn Place.
Yeah.
I think it's perfectly within our scope tonight to set some basic objectives and. If we feel like we already have a consensus about whether making or having a revenue source increase or revenue stream increase. Is an objective or not is within the scope of our conversation tonight.
Okay. Um. Okay.
Sorry, Barb. I'm just once again relaying comments from Donna. She just wanted everyone to know. Um. She does need to step away for a bit. She wanted me to convey that she does not want to see the this building moved. Um, and for me to text her if there's anything that we need.
Okay. All right. Um, Jerry Lee, I like I like where you're going with this and moving forward. Um. So, okay. Hmm. So you're asking. What does that look like? I I.
To me, if if I were going to phrase it, I would think it to be something along the line of one of the objectives would be to. Increase the rentability or usability by other groups or by groups in general. That that may end up paying money, but if we just say increase the usability of the building and Stephen, you may have a better way phrasing that. Then that would. Accomplish the objective of. A possible. You know, getting more revenue out of it. Because we're trying to basically come up with a more flexible. We want to increase the flexibility and the usability so more people would want to use the building. Now, who they are is a different story. How much we charge is a totally different story, but nevertheless, I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, um, so if we're opening up that discussion, what I would say is what I read a lot in the comments and. Kind of tend to agree with is like Phil said, a lot of people are interested for their purposes of renting it for a wedding or. For the town music cow or any kind of other event that has typically occurred here. They'd like the usability Film Society, Jack, thank you. Um. They'd like to see the functionality and usability improved. And. If that increases interest from outsiders to rent it, so be it. We can't control that, right? Other than by setting our pricing structure.
Mm hmm.
I see revenue as a side benefit. That is great, but not the driver. Yeah.
And that seemed to be the consensus back when we had that discussion that. But. People didn't mind it. They didn't want that to be. We weren't really. Doing it to market it.
So we're not putting a carousel?
No.
Oh.
Can have a disco carousel.
Only if it's historic.
No. I would vote for the ice cream shop.
Yeah, I would vote for that.
Oh, boy.
Starting historic, I was thinking that would be if if. If the. Excel scheme was considered or studied a little bit. I was thinking that would be one of the things the architect would do first off is have those discussions, kind of see what was involved in it. But if we can. Short circuit it and see, um, probably be good to find out if they, um, have a strong opinion on it. I. I tend to guess that they wouldn't mind moving it. Like if you said you were going to take it away completely, they would. Say absolutely not. If you were going to take it from very planned location, if it was planned in the original plan and you were going to move it in between two houses, they would. Truly say no to. I think they would be open to doing it the other way, but I don't know for sure. But it wouldn't, it would definitely wouldn't make sense if they. They could tell you to, you know, for sure that they're not going to be able to. Entertain it, but I I would be surprised if they said that, so.
Okay. Um. So what else do we need to? Um. Nail down.
All the other components, right?
All the other components. Everything else.
So far, I hear two options that we've explored, the high end and the lowest end. I haven't heard much about the middle.
Well, that's because they're between the high and the low. I mean. Um. So.
I guess I could jump in with one area that I saw in the comments that I'd like to explore. Um, the heating and cooling center for um, the concern of emergencies and potential climate change. I think that's a nice middle one to consider. Or a high end. It depends. Like, I don't know if it's high or middle because it's really about air conditioning, heating.
Sure.
Um. Additional resilience, right?
But it could be explored as a geothermal.
Well, it it could be, um, the real, the real deal on that to me is just the generator, but one thing is. Uh, former mayor Benjamin and I had a discussion about that a while ago and he brought up the point that. If it's called a heating and cooling center, then we have to meet certain things, requirements and so forth. If it happens to have a generator and people walk in the door, then it's probably different.
Mm hmm.
But as soon as we call it, we want to formally call it Heating Cooling Center, then we're going to be required to meet certain. You know, standards and so forth for that type of area. But I would think it would make perfect sense to put. A standby generator in and that would only probably cost in the neighborhood. I'm just guessing, but that's probably. Like a twenty thousand dollar. Price tag or forty thousand.
But.
But.
I.
Right, okay, so and there we go. Um. But that would not make a huge change in some of the things that would be done as far as the HVAC. It's basically just providing an alternate source of power.
Right.
So it's a bolt on.
I think yes, I think that's something that we should ask be included.
It's worth considering and and exploring whether that's actually true or not today because it could also provide a source of grants. There are lots of infrastructure grants right now that are aimed at climate resilience and so they could pay for themselves.
So while it could be more difficult and and higher hurdles to.
It might be worth it.
It might because if we could get a grant that. Covered that additional cost, it might. Be worth it.
I mean, I'm definitely in favor of putting a backup generator in, especially for town resiliency.
I think that goes in the basic option, really.
Right, that should go in the basic option. I agree because if we had an extended power failure and we've had them in the past. Knock on wood, we haven't had one recently. Um. But it would be great. The town offices could then be able to be moved to some extent, maybe over here. You know, and that could be, that actually could be part of the resiliency thing is that how would we set up the building to allow a move temporarily? Um, over to this building.
For functionality of government.
Functionality if something happened, heaven forbid, a fire or some other calamity occurred.
Yeah.
But. In agreement with you as far as if we could do a cooling center, do it some formally, sure.
Jerry Lee, you're on a roll. You're coming up with all the stuff that I'm.
I read it in the comments from the public.
Uh, bathrooms, I mean, uh. I mean, I think that's that's a question.
I think it's a must because we have a lot of. Small children in town. We have a lot of senior citizens in town. We really need, I think this facility is going to have real. Pure, accessible.
Truly accessible.
Legitimately accessible bathrooms and um, when the ones that we have were redone, I think it was twenty-ish years ago, maybe twenty-five. Um, it was kind of when ADA was relatively new. And it's a pretty big burden on a lot of public facilities to be able to make places accessible. So. Some of the things were accepted when they were kind of close enough, but these are not even close to accessible. So and it's not a huge cost in. In doing a, you know, significant renovation like this. And once you do any kind of significant renovation, you don't have a choice anyway. So it's been decades since you could. Kind of be close.
So that brings us back around, I think, to a question of historic and what um, what does it mean or? Do we? Do we want, what is the 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 front face of it? That is historic that we want to preserve? Is that? That addition where the bathrooms are was not there until fairly recently. Um. So. Any objection to either saying automatically, yeah, let's get rid of that because it's not historic versus. Uh.
Just for the benefit of the record, what year was that addition?
I think it's the fifties that was put on was back when it was a church. It might have been fifties or six, maybe.
So that was changed before it became Town Hall.
I think you had it in your research.
I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seventies. Yeah.
Someone will need to repeat what Sue was saying, or can you come to the mic?
What did Dave Alme said?
Dave Alme was instrumental in getting the permits and the one bathroom was considered. Um, handicapped accessible then when it was put in and he got special permission. I think he sweet talked people to only. Have a small bathroom in the front. So we could have two.
Yeah, he was able to do that because ADA was relatively new back then. Like you just, you can't do that anymore.
Do you, do you remember when that was?
He told me it was like ninety-eight or two thousand, something like that, I think. So, but the bathrooms are older than that, that that addition is.
Talking that addition.
That addition, I think, is from the fifties and then he renovated inside of it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because in nineteen seventy, the picture from nineteen seventy-three shows it there, so.
Does that, Jerry Lee, does it matter to you if it was there before this became Town Hall? I mean, does that?
Well, I think that's a factor. I was curious if during the early stages of this conversation, did you consult with the county um, historic staff and did they make any comments about that? Or was that just an idea that kind of came out of the the charrette?
There there's an idea I had going into the charrette and I think it's something that's pretty basic for doing in a report like this. Usually you get your, that's why you get an architect that has historic preservation knowledge is they'll. They'll figure out what are the core historic areas and they would mark all those. It would be this, it's really three rooms. It's this room or four. This this room was the. The all the former altar, the piano room and the entry room. And everything else is all addition, including the bathrooms. So they would mark those separately.
So say that again, it's the stage, what's essentially the stage, this room. The space directly lateral to where we are right now. So say that again, it's the stage, what's essentially the stage, this room, the space directly lateral to where we are right now. And then the little, oh, the little entryway.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll basically do something like this one drawing that shows it where it's, it's green is the historic. What was built in eighteen ninety-six or seven and everything else came later. I think it was the forties and fifties. But they, that's usually one of the big benefits of doing a study like that is you weigh the pros and cons of it. Is it, is it a contributing addition or is it non-contributing addition? Um, and then you weigh the pros and cons of keeping it. Is it better to keep it because it could be used for bathrooms or closet or something else up there? Reception or, um, coats, or do you, um, take it that, or what are the pros of putting it back to the way it was? And to me, I think one of the values would be you would be upgrading your electric anyway. So there's a, there was a window where the electric is. So it brightened up that room a lot and it would put the building potentially back to what it looked at. And I think, I think a lot of people had, when they heard that, they had reservations, assuming that like they're just used to the bathrooms here, like you wouldn't have, but you would actually have proper ones somewhere else in the building. And I think it would be beneficial to have them more secluded than right here. I think it's kind of a little bit. Uh, when you see people coming out of the bathroom, it could be a little bit embarrassing. So usually when you design a building from scratch, we, we never do this. So it's kind of, it's just, the building was designed in eighteen nineties without a bathroom. I guess the, the, the church must have figured people.
But I don't want to go back to that.
Yeah.
I, I want there to be a bathroom.
Yeah, so, um, this is, a lot of things in this town just happen because of the way history kind of ebbed and flowed. So it was a town with a very specific plan and it just never really worked out strategically or not. In, in succession, really fully be fit out. It's just kind of, you know, changed.
Have we officially asked our, um, town historic preservation committee if they have a consensus opinion on that question?
About the whether to take off that.
Right, whether to restore that facade to the original.
I think it was mixed and we talked it about a bunch, but there wasn't any, um, any real like decision on it. So a lot of these different concepts were talked back and forth and it was mixed, um.
I mean, it seems to me if it's not too much of an effort to at least, you know, put that in with that, the, the same category of relocation as an option to get a conceptual level, um, you know, rough order of magnitude for the cost. I, that, you know, I have no problem with that. I don't feel any great, um, pull or draw for us to restore that facade. Other than there is maybe some functionality reasons to move the bathrooms anyway. And if we're going to do that, then that certainly makes restoring the facade maybe, you know, you, we're not trying to keep those bathrooms there. And so we're not, you know, we're not giving up something that's, um, you know, that's a huge value for us, right? We, no, no one said, oh, the bathrooms must be right by the front door.
A couple.
Well, a few people did, but, but I mean, it's not something that was like across all of the comments we got.
But there were some people really attached to it, um, so.
But I'm, I'm just saying like as an option, I'm not, I, I, I'm, I don't feel like I'm decided on that particular question. I'm, I'm, but I wouldn't want to invest a lot of money in exploring.
Oh, you wouldn't know. Yeah, and it would be just kind of one of those things that goes in succession of the reports. There's, you know, looking at that aspect, there's looking at the windows, looking at the roof, and then you, you kind of weigh all those together and come up with a plan. So.
Is there a, um, so it, it's not automatic that we want to keep it. It's not automatic that we want to cut it off. So we want.
Yeah, and I don't think you should make that kind of decision anyway. The point of having a report is, and then I think it would probably lend itself it into landing different ways and different studies. So if you, if you have, say, one study that's looking at, what do you do with the full footprint of this building as it is? And really making an interior renovation plus, you know, just rebuild the, the exterior and in the current shade, that could be one option. But if you're looking at another option, it may be put storage and mechanical and so on.
Underneath.
Beneath it, it, it wouldn't really make any sense to spend a lot of money on taking the fifties addition, lifting that, taking it all apart and lifting it up. Versus, you know, pairing the building back down to its, you know, four original components and then putting those on a new foundation and building new proper foundations around everything else. So I think those kind of things would lend themselves to kind of being, you know, in a option two and three, say.
I have a question. Do we want to pursue or discuss or include in one of these concepts, any expansion? Other than a lower level for mechanical and storage, do we want to think about putting something on top for any use or purpose? Where are we fine with the size and the footprint of, and the usability of the space as it is?
Well, so we'll be limited, uh, we'll have the same limitations in terms of footprint and, um, and floor area ratio, right? I mean.
Um, not necessarily because it's, um, it's not a residential building. So our, our code is not really covering, you know, uh, on commercial buildings, but it's, it's on here because this one's on a residential lot. It just happens to be a non-residential use. So it probably could be something that could be worked through. Um, can't remember if this even met our residential number. Um, I think it did, but was close. But as far as doing an addition, I think it would be fruitful to look at something that looks at it. Like if we, if we didn't expand but reused all the building that exists here, but in a more thoughtful manner, it would be one thing. But then the other thing would be like, if you, if you looked at it as, if you took the back, let's say down to the original components and envision what, what would the town need if it was starting from scratch? Like, you know, would it be a, a smaller committee room or, you know, a room that's better acoustics or a whatever it could be, it could be like a little room before, um, what are the components that would make sense? A different type of kitchen and then figure out how those would fit in the back. And then we probably would need to keep it on one level, but we wouldn't have to. Um, the big issue is I think it would be really hard to get anything past Montgomery County Historic if it tucked out the sides or above this building. So you're most likely looking at something that's one story and plus also if you go to two stories, then you need that elevator back, um, so.
I'm just asking if the concept should be pretty much using the existing footprint and just moving walls around inside to accommodate our use.
But we would, we would be able without it. If we were to take off the additions that were put on there, sort of Frankenstein like, we could take those down and put new in that same place, but in better configuration and more thoughtfully done. If that.
And you most likely would be able to make them bigger than what it is now too. And then I don't think there would be anything necessarily holding us back from saying if it was decided, like maybe it makes sense to shift the building up five feet. Or I doubt it would be a case, but move it back five feet. It probably wouldn't be that much standing in the way of that sort of thing too. If, if it was kind of saying like it's, you know, crowding the backyard too much to fit that program there, maybe it makes more sense to move it up a little bit. Like one of the people had comments on, I think it was Doug Mader had that comment too, you know, would it, would it make sense to shift it up a little bit? So it's not so tucked back. Um, because we, we don't really even use, like very rarely I ever see anybody use the front yard other than like attic in the street. But I, my guess is that it was built back from the street originally is like a after services gathering space. It's just a guess. But we just don't really use it. I think when people use the outdoor space, like getting bit by bugs like I was out in the pack, so.
Just a question.
But I was, I guess along with that, we could theoretically, you expand the building out the back a few feet if we so found the need without too much of a problem. I could understand going up would be, could be an issue going down in a basement. I would think may not be much of an issue only because you can't see it. Um, but going back, I'm assuming, I don't know that we should be able to go back a few feet if we desire, or like you said, even move the building up and then go back a bit.
Yeah, I, I think we have a pretty decent amount of, like, we wouldn't be able to cover half the lot, but we would be able to get, I think, something that's markedly bigger than what's back there. If that's determining what, that's what makes sense. And something I had always thought about it before is, I was, for some reason, I guess, just because that addition we have back there is so flat and the ceilings are so low. The, the addition we have in the back is so flat and the ceilings are so low. I always like, thought about making it a, a nicer looking and a nicer layout of that space. But I kept thinking about it as something that was shorter, but realistically, this building is pretty tall. So if, if the hawk process, um, looking at historic preservation view, it's really going to be concerned about what you see from the street. There could be something that's in the back that has vaulted ceilings that maybe is a really nice acoustical space or really like a beautiful space. Because it could be taller, I guess, I guess, I just realized like yesterday, I think it was, I was, I kept thinking about it as like really pretty small rooms, but it could be a really pretty medium or a larger room too.
Maybe a piano room.
Yeah, something that's just a different purpose maybe than what this is.
It's a different kind of ceiling. Yeah.
Yeah, so something that kind of, you know, connects to the garden, say.
So, um, I just want to, we're at eight twenty-five right now and, um, and, and we're not, don't need to wrap this up right now. But I just want to, um, uh, ask a couple of questions. So once we do this request for proposals and we pick a firm and then they, whoever we pick, um, gives us a range of options or gives us four options of small, medium, large, extra large. We're not stuck with choosing one of those four. Because the next step is we can mix and match and say, well, I really like this element and I really like this element. And here's the, here's the, 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 the size of the project that we want to do. Like we want the size of the medium project, but we want this particular element from this large project. Like we're not committing to anything in particular, right? I mean, we'll be, we'll still, there's a lot more negotiations and mix and matching, right?
Yeah, it's really meant to stretch the imagination and it's almost always becomes a hybrid between
Right.
Different schemes. I find like, I like the approach to the building out of this one, the functionality of the other one.
Right, and I want a generator for that one. Yeah, it's mix and match.
Good. Just wanted to make sure that we're not.
We'll have that, we'll have the benefit of a, of a scope of work and a budget to help us make those decisions, which is what we're missing now.
Right, right. Yeah, um, so the next step after we're done with our discussion is that we will, um, turn this over to Barb. Who will then incorporate what we've said and then we'll start asking, you know, put it out for bid. And then that bid process typically is what, thirty days? A deadline of thirty days beyond?
We would want at least four weeks, I think.
Okay.
That's usually a, I don't think you want firms to disqualify themselves just because of.
Not enough time, sure. Um, is there another revision that comes back or once we hand it off to you, um, it?
I would like to circulate it. Actually, if you don't mind, I've been trying to sort of take not just my own notes for minutes purposes. If I can share the screen and if you all can tell me if I've captured what were your, your key components. I was trying to make sure that people at home could also kind of follow along.
Please, thank you.
Um, so regarding the kitchen, I had noted that you wanted to explore different levels of kitchen upgrade and their associated cost. Um, there was some discussion about highlighting the types of items that need to be stored in this building. Um, kind of share that with whoever the bidders are, but not necessarily specify a solution that you wanted to allow different design creativity on the part of the firms. Um, there seemed to be a consensus that you did want, um, the RFP to include as a must have, opening up the rear of the building to increase usability of the space.
Of the outdoor space?
And I meant more from this part back, basically, that there were too many walls and that you wanted to.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Too many little rooms.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, I would, I would just maybe add to your note interior.
Right.
Rear of the.
Or, okay.
Rear of the interiors. I will do that. Um, you wanted to explore, um, a generator installation?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, could, could we clarify that? I really feel strongly and I think Phil does as well, that that is a basic minimum requirement, not.
I would, I mean, I would vote for as a minimum requirement.
If it has to go outside inside a container, so be it.
Well, and I had a question. We've been having some internal discussions as a staff, um, just within the last week, Kayla and I've been discussing and George. Actually trying to pursue getting a generator at Penn Place, since that's when the, where the offices are, there's the post office. So I guess part of the thinking is, I, I do agree that one of our buildings should basically have a generator. But should it be this building or should it be?
Both.
Both. Why not both?
Okay. Uh, so do you want that to be a mandatory provision in terms of someone coming up with?
Would go for a mandatory that we do it.
Seems like there's a majority of you, is that correct?
Let's just say plan generator installation then.
Right, I can't change the screen, but I will change that, um. I was a little lost in this part of your discussion, so please tell me if I didn't capture it correctly. Um, it seemed like you wanted to explore options both based on the existing building footprint, but also some options with the removal of the nonhistoric additions. Is that correct? And I think as part of your discussion, you also talked about possibly taking down the nonhistoric additions and possibly rebuilding additions. But those would be more functional perhaps and more consistent with the historic nature of the building. Did I capture that correctly?
Correct, yeah. It's pretty much a base of doing this kind of report.
Right, and then I think just the, with more on reminder, that basically of all these options, you really wanted to sort of have a mix and match and know what the cost implications were of everything that's being reviewed.
But I think we also want to upgrade the electrical sprinkler, fire protection.
Yeah, we need it to be a safer building.
HVAC.
Right, if I just generally.
All the, all the components.
All the structural components and basically obviously address any kind of code deficiencies in the building as they exist today as opposed to perhaps in two thousand fifteen.
Right, and it might end up triggering.
Correct.
Something that's missing.
There's two important ones. So kind of what Lisa said is that I think there's been concern over the years about the structure below this. It's really tight crawl space. And then that was one of the things I think Phil and I were talking about a few years ago is that that would be a benefit of having a basement option to at least look at that. Because then all that lumber would be visible and workable, um, for the town staff. Um, the other thing with, um, the systems that, you know, just like, um, Jack was saying with AV equipment, it's good to kind of have flexibility and be able to keep up to date. A lot of stuff has just changed in the last couple of years on, and it's changing a lot now on HVAC. It's a lot, a lot less emphasis on fuel burning and more going towards electrical systems that it really wasn't even the case.
We might not even be able to get gas, you know, by the time we get there, there, the county might say we can't even do it. But, um, and, and wifi and media technology, acoustics, the windows are all going to have to be glazed or somebody's going to do something with the windows, so.
Yeah, that's, that's all, that's all stuff that's going to be, um, you know, the, the part of preservation.
Right.
Effect is, is that that'll be included.
So it all meets code and.
Right, yeah.
Right. I mean, I know this is.
I was gonna say, I'm, would almost think we want to put the basement as something we have to do. I mean, unless the foundation of the building is considered really good.
I would think it's been considered bad.
Absolutely, it's been considered bad. That's what I, that's my understanding of it too. And so for that reason, if we're going to replace it, there's no sense in putting the crawl space in when put in a full basement. So I might as well just make it just like the, the generator should be something we do, put in a full basement.
And then, and then put all the equipment in storage.
Oh, definitely.
Right.
Definitely.
Okay, so, so you're saying that all the options should have a foundation with a basement?
Yeah, because the foundation's not that great to begin with. And what's the sense of putting in?
I mean, could we just ask them to give us a, a rough order of magnitude early, in an early phase of the exploration of the difference of repairing the current foundation or, you know, shoring up the current foundation versus, versus a full basement? I, it just seems to me it could possibly be a big difference, but I'm not sure. I did put in a basement in my house and it, it was a pretty big difference for us.
Excuse me, fair enough. Yours was done the hard way too.
It was done the hard way, yes.
So, so we don't want to say that it, it's not as, or it's not, uh, an absolute yes, the way a generator is. We, but we want to know the difference. We, we want it to, to know the options.
Yeah, maybe if the RFP could demonstrate some, you know, have some phases and we get some of those early decision points sorted out with some really conceptual information and then they could explore further. Perhaps it becomes a definite based on those, that early information.
Okay.
That's where they lend themselves to like falling into different, um, early schemes or options. And then you end up going with a hybrid. You might say, we really like, we really like the third from the bottom option, but we, we can't afford this piece of it. So why, why don't we do that the way it was done in number two, but do everything else of number three? And that could be something just like the, the basement. And then you end up not having a basement because you can't afford it and put a crawl space in. But then like you, you do the scheme that shows a crawl space around what you would keep with the crawl space and not changing the foundation. You, you look at the one with the basement and what would you do if you were going to be doing the heavy excavation anyway? Like you would, I was saying earlier, you wouldn't keep the nineteen fifties addition. You would go back to eighteen ninety-seven and then build out from there again. So like those, those kind of things will come out as components in this. So just like the kitchen, I think it would be good too with the kitchen and you know, it's Barb to make sure that they, that it's understood not different levels of kitchen as far as levels of fancy finish, but more different functionality. Is it, um, is it a, is it a warming kitchen versus a food service kitchen? Or a demonstration kitchen that's in between?
Right.
And I guess one thing I would throw in about the basement for a moment, but actually with a lot of these things is that we consider that they should consider future upgradability. In other words, with a basement, it'd be, I know Jerry Lee, you guys did it. Um, where you put a basement into a house that's this old or older. Um, but what I'm thinking is something like a basement, we might want to consider, but we cut off some other option. And we do that later because we can do, we can do that.
And we do that later because we can do, we can do that later in phases. So exactly.
Right. And and it may be much more affordable to put a basement in this building because it's not occupied during the construction, right? So, you know, you could jack it up and do the basement, not the way we did where we lived with it. But, you know, I think it's just getting a little bit of design rough order information first before we decide.
That's right. Yeah.
So. And then Barb, you were going to also find out about the historic preservation and what we can and can't do.
Is there any, I mean?
It's one of the things she should include is the concept of moving the building to a different
Right.
lot that
Oh, yeah. Yeah, put that on there, too.
Yeah.
As a rough order.
Yeah.
Option.
Assuming that the county doesn't absolutely say no.
Makes it right.
I'll just stress in there, that would be a really high level option. We really just need a like a three D view and really quick sketchout plans just to kind of see the what if not spend a lot of time on it, because I think everything else would be you know, a new addition built on the back of here versus next to it somewhere else is not going to be that much different. And all the treatment of the historic parts of it are going to be the same. And most of, if not all the schemes, so it's really isolating that that variable.
And if we're able to get a basement where we can put the HVAC and stuff and all the all that stuff down there, and then we have more workable space up here.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, but then even with with HVAC, a lot of stuff, it's it's a little bit potentially less need for equipment now. You may not need a boiler. If it's a heat pump, maybe that could be done a different way. So
Right.
That that's part of what they would be studying is proposing different mechanical systems and telling you what are the pros and cons of each like, because some of them might be better from a historic preservation standpoint to not have equipment out on the ground, not have noise, um, that they might be better cost or there might be some that are more efficient than others. So you would be able to kind of see all the pluses and minuses of each one and then figure out what's the best. So.
Is there anything else glaring that we need to discuss for this? So I, and while we're thinking, I just want to say I maybe I'm wrong, but I I think this is the first time that as a council, we've actually talked about this and we've actually made plans like ever to say now we're really moving forward. And I think that's a really big deal. That um is I I remember Jack was you were in charge of the renovation when you were council. Yeah, wasn't that one? I think that was your one of your exactly. And that's my same thing as I say, yeah, I was on the council. Jack handed it off to me. Yeah, kind of. So this has really been in the works for not in the works, but it has been a thing. We've talked about it for many, many years. And so I'm really proud of us for for actually saying let's let's truly move this forward. So I think yay, good on us.
Okay.
Mayor, before we move over, I I've made some changes. Can I just pop this on the screen one more time just to see if I captured everything? So I added addressing the code deficiencies, upgrading the systems. Um, just added some notes for myself about the kitchen that it's more functional use of the space rather than finishes. This is letting me do this. Um, basically, I did it. Put explore full basement installation versus founding only foundation repair work and crawl space work. Um, that's what I understood. Obviously, this will be worded better in an RFP than I'm doing right now. Um, open up the building interior at the rear to increase usability. I put the generator as a must have as a reminder to myself. Um. And then just added the note about if permissible by HPC. Um, basically explore a high level option of moving the building to another town owned site.
Or it should have the ADA um.
Is that not an obvious?
It's it's kind of in there automatic, but just with the basement especially. Like, what are our what are our possibilities of using that space?
In terms of
Without it being accessible to the public.
Yeah, I will say when I was working up in Westminster, the library there um had the put their basement basically building as a commercial kitchen, oddly enough, since you've been talking about it. But not only that also triggered having an exterior exit from the space so that there were at least two ways. So I I think your point about defining what is public is important. Um.
Yeah.
Is there anything that I've overlooked that you all have talked about?
Do we want to say something to the effect of we want to upgrade all the wiring and plumbing? Because I mean, we know the plumbing is old. We know the wiring is old.
I I think those are pretty essential
Yeah.
all around.
Something I always had in the drafts of RFP that we didn't really talk about tonight, but I think we'd all agree on is a high level concept for the um exterior spaces, too. Like how that relates to the building. Like we're gonna we're gonna want to see that. Yeah, the garden and the front and the back like um.
But you know, um
That makes sense.
Thinking about what Ken Raven mentioned, um exterior sprinklers on the roof might not be triggered by code, but if there were a fire at one of the neighboring houses, that could protect this building.
Okay. Stephen, would you mind repeating what you were saying about the the front landscaping and the back landscaping of the space?
I guess maybe the the clearer way to probably say it is that we went to to explore what the site options are, like the site and landscaping options are. So that to make a true accessible lead up to the building. There may be a second one to go around the side door and or the back door, those kind of things.
Are you saying the cracked pavers out front are a non like we can't keep those?
And and that and the the slope and the railing or lack thereof and
Yeah, I know the um town arbers did email me, I think, after seeing the mayor's communication yesterday about some thoughts he had just about ripping up the azalea bushes and some other things. So he would like this explored as well.
I think Butch brought that up year, two many years ago. It was really difficult to maintain the front of the building because some of that vegetation has just gotten so large. But um, I meant and noted earlier, just just in general, I think Butch and George and Frank did a wonderful job with this building because it was really like some of that siding, it's not original. And that's why it was crumbling. It's kind of newer, cheaper wood. Um, because it was replaced at some point, but they did a really great job of making this you know, fixed up to to kind of hold, you know, hold down the fort, you know, for a couple of years. And we did the same thing with the roof. Like I was up there with Frank several years ago, and it's good. Everything's kind of like watertight and looking good. So this can really be studied to um for, you know, for the long term.
Yeah, I did want to add, I know George does have concerns about the exterior of this building um and wanting that to be a project in the near term. So with your uh concurrents, I'd like to put something in there just so that is factored into any kind of renovation project in terms of cost.
It would be the and the root.
Right.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Do and I uh Stephen, I think, wow, I don't know. I guess Stephen Lisa may know more about this than I, but would we want to try and uh aim towards a lead certified design? Or upgrade? Or is that? Okay, you gave me the answer.
High end option.
And I got my answer, I think.
Worth looking at. It could it could open up grant opportunities again.
Right. I mean, we could look at it. I just
Okay.
Harry Gordon used to be on the board, but I don't know if he still is. Do you know if he is? Is he still or on the lead board? Yeah. But um, yeah, it could be a beneficial and and even a lot of public buildings, what they would do is um do things that would meet leave, but just not spend the money to get the certification, but just have the satisfaction that you did those approaches. So and both of those are um is there's a lot of money in putting together all the paperwork that
Right.
it takes to get that.
Gas or
Mm hmm.
going to be a big one.
Yeah. And if we do renewable energy, so on and so forth, there's a lot of di- different things you could trade off. Different points.
Pretty a while ago. He's recording. And for one house, one, it was a pretty big house. It's about a nine, ten thousand square foot house. We had to dig six hundred and fifty feet to get enough lower, you know, enough piping under the frost line to make it work.
Yep.
And the Washington Monument is only five hundred and fifty tall.
Yep.
So I was kind of always astounded by that. So, okay, anyways.
We have gas here now, don't we? Or am I wrong?
Yeah, there's a gas stove here, isn't it?
I think that's a gas furnace. Gas.
No, it's electric.
It's a gas furnace, though, isn't it? Now, if we have gas now, does that uh if we're doing a renovation, would that mean that we'd still be able to keep the gas? Or yeah.
Changing it so that nobody can continue to use gas. They're trying to get everybody to go to electric.
I think if we were in California, we couldn't do it now. In Maryland, you still can, but who knows what it's going to be.
Yeah, I think it's a new construction, but it could be triggered if with this this kind of substantial renovation. Okay. All right.
Okay.
I want to
The architects will know about that.
Yes. Are we okay? We are we okay if we wrap this up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ah, excellent. Wonderful, wonderful. Um. The time is eight fifty. We're moving on to talking about the town office renovation.
Yeah.
Um. So one of the things one Barb has asked that um it for our, I don't know if it's permission, but if 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 we are willing to grant latitude, can you explain this, Barb? I I don't want to make it sound like you're
No, I what I was saying to Joanna is I think the most important takeaway that I need this evening is direction from the group in terms of what space, if any, do you want to expand the town office in and what spaces do you want to pursue rental? Because I think that is the critical decision, I think, at this juncture. I think once that decision is made, what I'd like the latitude to do is to go back to lumber and light and maybe have some conceptual drawings um based on that direction. As I said to Joanna, when lumber and light was doing its work, um, there has been a change and basically Joanna did not feel strongly that she needed a an office space. That was not
Or at least not
Well, not you didn't need not a large office space. Um. That was not the parameters that were given to lumber and light at the time they did their work.
And also I was kind of bothered by the idea of the town, the town man, the whatever, what is your title?
Manager.
Town manager and the assistant overseeing a space. I just think that's difficult to conduct business and make phone calls and have meetings. And so I'd rather have two smaller offices than one shared space.
So the question is after what we decide tonight is of what space are we going to expand into previously rented space? Are we not going to? Are we comfortable than just letting Barb move on and and basically handle it herself? And figure out what the inside is going to look like? Like, how how much do we need to be have our our fingerprints on this?
Well, I think
Decide that piece.
I think Barb wrote to Black Market and they are interested in more space. So that's good to know. We already leased
Well, so they they didn't say that they wanted more space. They were interested in hearing what it would cost and what the space would be like. Yeah.
And if I can add one other thing, I'm also trying to Donna is back online now. Um. And certainly, I think by asking for latitude, it's important to me, for example, like, let's just say you want to incorporate tenant space A, but you want us to pursue rental of tenant space B. Just using that hypothetically, are there parameters even within incorporating tenant space A that you you want to provide direction on, such as you want a conference room that seats ten people? Um, so I'd like to get as much direction from you as I can, but I do think some of these parameters have shifted from what lumber and light previously had to work with. And so I think um I'd like to get them up to speed, but also whatever your direction is this evening. Um, and certainly we can bring concept plans back to you. Um, I'm just trying to convey that I don't need to know what color you want the walls painted this evening. I just need sort of the broad stroke. So at least we can narrow the field of what we're working with.
Yeah, and I I wanted to say one thing about that space question. Which is, there's a lot of books in the entryway that were Barbara Schneider Schneider's garden books.
Mm hmm.
And I spoke to Susan Hargreaves, where is the executive director of the nursing home where she is. And I spoke to Lizzie Glidden Boyle, who's a good friend of hers. And their thought was that we don't have to keep the books there. Like, I'm not sure they're really used. It's a lot of space. So maybe donating them or recapturing that space for some other use might be something that I would certainly want to pursue.
Um, could be a waiting area.
Could be any.
Sometimes it was used that, but I've never seen anybody use the books.
Right. And there's a lot of them.
So we wouldn't I don't think we want to capture that space for town office.
Right.
You know, like, it wouldn't be a reception area like that. We would turn that into a reception because we would still have traffic from from the tenants if we had those two front spaces being rented. Um. So but yes, it's nice to know that that's an option is just
Space that's maybe available to do something else, but um.
Yeah, it's true. You probably couldn't use it unless it really was dedicated, a dedicated floor.
Unless you put a hall. But
I didn't think to, yeah, I didn't think to ask the Arbor reading committee their thoughts about that, but I would want to um before we
About those books.
jettison the the garden collection, because I do think that that's a kind of a special treasure. And and I don't think just because Barbara doesn't care whether we keep it or not, that doesn't seem to be reason. It is very much valued by our garden community.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add that when we had the I had the commercial uh real estate broker walk through the space. He commented on the same space, just in terms of at a minimum, if we were going to be renting tenant space B, that some it needs to be cleaned up and make more professional in appearance.
Right. Right, but that doesn't necessarily mean getting rid of the books.
He he probably would have gotten rid of most of them. Like, there's a whole, you know, thing about how you organize bookshelves. I mean, he was sort of conveying his opinion on that.
We need a little Feng Shui of the uh yes, the bookroom.
Well, I would agree with not getting rid of the books. I mean, I think that the books are could be a valuable resource. Maybe they need to be relocated to somewhere else to make things better. And maybe eventually this building becomes a the repository. I'm not sure, but
But Okay. That sounds Okay.
So.
Okay. So, but um but I think I mean is anybody interested in putting a hallway so that we can close that space off? Like, I don't know that is that is that space one that we're including in this renovation? I guess that's the question. This 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 retooling of the area is, I mean.
I think it's nice having a an an open lobby space that is um not locked off from public to I think that's another value that I appreciate about that space.
Okay. So
It's a door off a hallway. It's a little bit of a space to stand outside the door. It's kind of nice.
Okay, so it sounds to me like that's like we're not gonna, we're not touching that space.
Okay.
So we can decide what to do with it. Um. Uh separately. But in terms of the scope of of our discussion here, we're talking about inside the the current, not the current, but the the current front of um of the offices and then working toward the back. Are we, is, I mean, I guess um does Donna, by the way, have anything that she wants to share at the moment about this?
She does not have her hand up.
Okay.
She basically had just asked me what she knows. So I just emailed her my notes that I had put out.
What I was gonna say is that I don't think we should preclude maybe sprucing it up a bit. Maybe we need better lighting or something. I mean, spending a little bit of money on it to kind of make it a little better, jazz it up a little bit.
Okay.
I think that we should that would be something we should throw into the pot.
Some consistency with the rest of
Yeah, you know, somehow if we're doing a some theme. Yeah.
Okay.
Clean, organize.
Yeah, exactly.
Agreed. Barb, you got that?
Yep.
Um. In terms of space, there is the options are we keep the exact footprint that we have now. Um. There's the option of adding the space that used to be rented by Pat Keating. Um, that's what we refer to as tenant space A. And then there's a smaller room that's uh more of a closet that is toward the front of that hall on that floor that we referred to.
The black market room.
Right, next to the space, black market rents and right next to the um uh elevator that we refer to as space B. Um. Is there opposition? I guess I'm working from the assumption that we need space A. Um, I have moved or uh Frank has moved my desk into that space and it's, you know, it's just a little corner of of a of a big room. Um, but there is a large table that I think currently as as it is, seats maybe six. Um. Do we need, do we want a dedicated room? Do we want to put up walls and make a room in that space so that it's a private uh conference room versus just having it be sort of a somewhat segregated um space within the bigger
Depends on who's there. I think that there's definitely more full time people now than there is the space that was designed, whatever it was twenty years ago.
Right.
To do it. So at the best, like you're a probably one extreme of a mayor that need a grand office. There are others that wanted to be there all the time and wanted the big office. There are others that were there part time. Before that, there was a flip flop in between like Ted Pratt's office and what the
Right.
mayor's office was, I think it flipped by Mayor's office was, I think it flipped by forth a couple of times. So it was bearing an opinion. So we probably need to plan in something that's for a mayor versus your preference or the previous mayor's performances or preferences, but but something is reasonable for any mayor, but I think also like the the functionality of it, you know, probably makes sense like to consider it might be to something where one of those spaces is really more like when the mayor is there or there's committees there, maybe the or maybe it's a simple way to look at it is those kind of spaces come into play when exist existing office may work most of the time just fine for a town manager assisting town manager and admin to kind of have the three distinct spaces that are there. Um, you know, could especially if it's something that's short term. I know it's like a very low percentage that we might combine town office with town hall, but that was one of my thinkings is if there's like a lighter touch renovation to kind of get us through twenty twenty three, then we would know later in twenty twenty three, probably earlier in twenty twenty three, which is the direction on town hall. And if if that the door is going to close on ever combining those things, then you know.
It's one of the concepts from town hall going to be to accommodate office space for from Penn Place into town hall. Cause I don't think right now that's part of the concept.
It hasn't been before. I think it wouldn't make any sense here, but if, you know, in the option that's over there, it could be something where you have the town office, the meeting hall and all that kind of thing.
We move it.
Together, yeah. But I think it's it's a low percentage, but you know, if if for some chance that that percentage comes out to be the favorable one in the end, then like it would be a shame to spend a lot of money on the second floor Penn Place and then have to convert it back.
So I I I I maybe made assumptions. Is there a consensus that we want to expand into that that larger space?
Well, it sounds like the staff wants it and needs it. And are we going to keep the big table that is where Elizabeth works now and then have another conference room in the back? Or are we gonna figure?
I think I I think it's all open for discussion. I think what lumber and light envisioned um was not having that large table there. Um, part of their design, and I can certainly bring it up if that would be helpful. Was incorporating sort of a flex space. So like George right now has like a little corner unit, but
Right.
Kind of a counter that's um seating height. Um, and then having a separate conference room was one of their options. Obviously, it's subject all to your direction.
I guess I'd say that um looking at the scenarios and and the cost differences. They aren't as big as I was expecting between the options. And I would say we don't gain a lot by using tenant space B.
That's smaller.
The smaller one that's near the the library and the elevator. And since our current tenants might be willing to rent that out, that it's a small space. I doubt it's very attractive to anyone else other than and as you know,
Yeah.
An add on for an existing tenant. Um, so to me, leaving B as something that we could rent out or use for storage when it's not rented out. But easily, you know, storage in a way that we could easily empty it, vacate it when we need, when we have tenant interest. Okay, so should we do a thumbs down on on renovating space B?
I would agree with Jerry Lee. I mean, just what you said, you know, I'm fine with it. And there are a couple of things I have for tenant space A, but right now.
Okay.
I would say no renovation on on the, yeah, I would say too, because it's I
the prior like staffing level, we could have considered maybe making space B into a conference room and having that separate across the hall. For special events, I think that was something that was even looked into before. Whereas now we have the staffing level that makes it where we need the conference space or should have the conference space to get it out of the admin and you know, you need an extra full time office. So probably makes more sense to, and I was also surprised that the broker said that B was so comparable to A. I would have thought A would have been twice as marketable as B, but they were a lot closer than I.
Uh Donna, Donna wanted to chime in.
Um, yes, thank you, Mary. I just wanted to add that um I'm not of the thumbs down on for um um thought process because uh if we're making renovations, I think we should do it across the board. Um, making them later down the line may or may or may not occur and uh the contractors and materials, et cetera, would be different. And plus uh making those renovations would, if if necessary and if desirable, be more of a more of a a way to bring in um, you know, a tenant for that banner.
So does that mean um like cleaning up that space and making it more desirable? But not necessarily planning for us for the town offices to take it over. You just mean making it better because we have the workers and the equipment and all that other stuff there is, am I getting that right?
That's what I thought you said. And it would make sense. Yeah, let's fix it up.
Yes, if if the decision, if the decision is across the board now, my opinion is that um we would renovate that space for for the town itself. However, if if that is not the decision made, I I would um suggest that we renovate everything from you know, left to right, so that it it's um sensible and cohesive as a as a unit. Um, and that we're not waiting for another time or place to, you know, finish up the task. If we're starting it, we should finish it appropriately. Um, personally, I I think we could use all the space, but um if that's not the decision that is made, um most definitely at least make sure that we're renovating um all the parts.
Would it make a difference if Black Market Bistro were interested in that space? I mean, if they're just going to put cans of tomatoes in there. Um, I I don't know that we need to put in, I don't know, is there carpeting? I don't even know what's in there, but is, I mean, is is that something that we should take into consideration before we decide the level of of cleaning it up, fixing it up?
Definitely.
Sure.
Yes and no, I would say. Um, because I'm not a a fan of the fact that Black Matt Bistro has to come upstairs in order to access um their
Yeah, their pantry. Oh, I think we lost you.
It looks like you get muted.
No, she's not.
Oh, I can see it.
Yeah, she's not muted.
Across microphone on the.
Man just lost the signal.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
I still think it's important though, just to keep weighing in. And we had a pretty substantial amount of office rent there a couple of years ago, and it's probably not the ideal time to to go back to that, but I I think it would be helpful to at least rent some of that back. So it's not a full extreme from what we used to have. I can't remember what what was the rent per year? Barb, do you remember?
Or tenant space B?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For when? So it was, it ranged from um, let's see, starting ten years ago, fifty five hundred dollars up to a high of 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 ninety four hundred.
Yeah.
A year.
And then the other one was what? It was up to twenty?
Twenty eight, twenty eight thousand.
Yeah, twenty thousand.
Yeah, I would say tenant space B obviously as a smaller space and the uh commercial real estate broker said this would be expected. It had more turnover. Obviously, Mr. Keating was there for a long time, and I think tenant space B roughly was more in the six to seven thousand dollar range if you were to average it out.
Yeah, it's not nothing.
No, it was not massive either. I guess tenant space A was really high, but that might have been you know, especially high for the town.
So when I did was opposed to the thumbs down on tenant space B.
She wants to renovate everything.
Right, right, right. So is there we need to sort of decide, are we going to reconsider using tenant space B for the town?
So how about another option? We do some explorer exploratory conversations with the current tenant of the restaurant. If they are interested, we could revisit at a near future council meeting, whether I would want to work with them to renovate that space to meet their needs. Another, we could, if they're not really that interested or very lukewarm about it, I'd be open to renovating it. Not necessarily for town use, but if you look at the the renovation option for it with a hotspot desk and some storage, that could be very attractive to an office tenant, right? Even it, whether we used it or rented it out, it could be dual use. Um, and we wouldn't have to commit ourselves at this early point to town use of it. But it could be, you know, so that's just another option I put out there.
So the potential work that we could decide to do there doesn't necessarily impact the rest. That can be an add on thing that we throw in later. And we can punt that for right now until we know the interest of the current of the restaurant.
Right, right.